All right, let's go ahead and open up the meeting at this time, please. Turn all cell phones, electronic devices off or vibrate. Ms. Darlene, will you please leave your stuff and enter the seat?
Our dear heavenly Father, we just thank you, Lord, for this day. We ask, Lord, that you will just give us an abundant rain that we need. We ask, Lord, that you will guide and direct us, Lord, as we make the best decisions for the city of Ballinger. In your precious name, amen.
By allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, consider approval of the minutes of August 7th, 2017 meeting, please. Second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Visitors who are not on the regular agenda will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. Is anyone present that's not on the agenda of the meeting? All right. All right, pass in order to call the local option liquor election for November 7th, 2017 election. Have you all been verified?
Yes. Make a motion to pass the local option liquor election for November 7th, 2017.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of us? Okay. While we're discussing other things, I'll pass this around and everyone of us has to sign.
I say.
All right, discuss and act to approve citizens' participation plan in conjunction with the city's 2017 downtown revitalization program, grant application.
Okay, as y'all gave me approval last meeting, we're doing a TDA, CDBG, DTR. It's the Department of Agriculture Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization Grant. Otherwise known as the Sidewalk, Sidewalk Grant. Here's a citizen participation plan. No one showed up at our public hearing that would have just held. And so, no one provided comment, I should say. And so, this is the, basically, how we're going to inform the public and the and our citizens of how this grant will proceed. I need council to pass this plan as well as appoint a review committee for engineering and grant administration. That committee typically is the mayor, the city secretary, and myself. And so, I would, we would need that authority. We did send engineering RFPs out last week. We did put an ad in the paper. I think it went in Thursday. Act of the Day will be on the 24th. I think it went in last Thursday, I was looking for the spreadsheet today. That's it. The way this is going to work is we'll, we'll go through the grant process, we'll write it. We do not incur any expenses unless we are funded. We will have to determine a match amount at some point. And there are pros and cons to the match. Some of it can be in time and some of it can just simply be, or it can all be cash. So, I would not recommend that at all. You look anywhere from $25,000 to $75,000 in match funds. So anyway, that's where we are. Any questions on the Sidewalk Grant? I don't know where we're going to start. I don't know how much money we're going to get. And I don't know how far we're going to go. But this allows us the opportunity to dot the ads across the piece and submit the paperwork.
That's everything that we're going to do is going to include all the streets, not just...
We will not have enough money to do all the streets. It will have to be a targeted area.
Other cities have done two or three of these.
Yes.
So, on this first one?
You do the first one, you finish it, and then you come back and do the second one, you finish it, and then the third one, if need be.
Make a motion to approve the citizen participation plan in conjunction with the revitalization program and assign the mayor, the city manager, and the city secretary as...
A purity.
As purity.
Second is property. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, discuss and act to approve the request for proposal for banking services.
Okay, this is a depository contract with First National Bank of Ballinger. Not to be confused with Ballinger National Bank. This is still a bank. That contract is set to expire at the end of October. And so, we will take action on this on our October 2nd meeting. I put the ad in the paper. I know it's going to go in on the 24th for sure. I will provide this RFP to all three local banking institutions. You have to have a physical bank in Ballinger to submit. And so, this is a form from KML. And I kind of modified it for our needs. Any questions on the depository contract? And so, this is a requirement that we're supposed to do by the Public Funds Investment Act every five years. So, this will expire October 31st, 2022.
I make a motion that we approve your request for proposal for banking.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and so, approval of building permits? We were informed we did not have any building permits. We will move on. Here, the city administrators, by a weekly report, please.
Okay, in your packet, you should have the budget. It's quite lengthy, about 25 pages. You also have, it was supposed to go out on Friday and it just didn't get put in there. The budget narrative, it's about a nine-page document. It kind of outlines what, what we're looking at here. This is not an adoption of the budget. This is simply your opportunity to look at it for first glance. This is a draft. This is not the final prepared budget. Couple of highlights in here. If you go to the budget summary, and I don't have the pages numbered, I'll go into those later. Our budget's basically, basically two components, proprietary and general, general fund, funds things such as the police department, fire department, parks, administration, things of that nature. The enterprise fund or the proprietary fund is the water and sewer fund. Airports also considered in that, but it's not a significant portion of the budget. We also collect sales tax. Our sales tax is 1% of all the local taxable sales. That's why we like to see how good we are given. That's probably our biggest sales tax generator. We also take, we also have the opportunity to give one another 1%, what's called special use tax. And half of that, we use towards property tax reduction. And so, we apply approximately $400,000 to $500,000 every year. And the tax office gets us the adjusted property tax rate, which is what we've operated on since 1988. That's when the other portion, or when that was adopted. But we only enjoy half of our sales tax. Another half penny will go to Reynolds County for their property tax reduction. So, that's another $400,000 to $500,000 a year. That leaves the city of Ballinger and goes to the courthouse to keep their taxes low. That was a result of an election, I think, in 1988. If that was to be reversed in the future, projects that we could use would include anything from street paving, economic development, downtown improvements, direct into the GR, general fund, general revenues. There's about half a dozen to 10 special reuse projects you can do. For that, we'd even apply to our whole property tax reduction if we chose to and reduce property taxes even further. So, there's a number of things that we could do. You could do 4A, 4B, MDD, I mean, just... But those are funds that we currently do not have available to us that go to Reynolds County. And I wanted our citizens to be advised of that. And $500,000 pays a lot of streets. $500,000 does a lot of downtown revitalization. $500,000 buys a lot of equipment. There's a lot of things you can do and have to be in dollar range. That is a sales tax-generated revenue, not a property tax. And so, that is something that, particularly, those are just funds that we just don't get. Property taxes, you determine your property taxes value times rate, about about 100, it's been that way. I think since 1870, hasn't changed. We are roughly 20% of the total tax liability of citizens in Reynolds County. I'm waiting to see what the other rates are going to be from the other industries before I put the pie chart out there. I know the school's going to be at about $1.17. I think Reynolds County is going to be at 62. I think the hospital's going to be at about 25, 350, 25. And we're, whatever y'all want to commit, anywhere from $50 to $55. Or we do a little, I would not recommend that, but that's something we can do. We actually receive more revenue out of the sales tax than we do property taxes. We generate over $1 million a year in sales tax. We have this year budget of $856,000 in property tax, which is very unique for a town of 3,800 people. Most cities, that is completely flipped and it's also disproportionate. Most cities of 3,800, in Texas in general, their majority of their general fund is through property taxes and very little is through sales tax. And so, that is something that's unique to Ballinger. We should be committed for, and when I say we, the city, not, not us, the city out there, should be committed for that. Couple of things on the tax rate. You have a list of the options. Again, this is a tax rate hearing, but I wanted to provide you with, if you went to the effective rate, the additional levy is X. If you went, if we stay at the current rate, the additional levy is X. If you went to 4%, the additional levy is X. If you went to the rollback rate, the additional levy is X. The ad that's going to come out in the paper next week has our proposed rate as the effective rate. And as I have said for over a month and just reiterate again, that gives you flexibility to come down to any number you choose. If you went in and said, "We're going to stay at the current rate," that does not give you any flexibility to go up should you choose. And so, you have those materials. We have had a public hearing on September the 5th, September the 12th, and we will adopt the budget and the tax rate on September the 18th. Those public hearings will be at 5:15 to 5:30, and we will take public comment at that time. I'm prepared to adjust the budget. That's why I'm, the budget that you have here is a draft, but I'm prepared to adjust that budget either way. I budgeted the lowest number or the, the effective rate number in our budget right now. And so, if you choose to go up from that, we have some places to put it. We have cut, we've cut a number of funds. I can think of PD and fire department off the top of my head, the street department is another one we've cut. And so, we've cut a number of funds to try to do the best we can with the dollars that we have. We also have an over 65-year-old tax exemption for our residents. Currently, 918, I don't want to say residents, I guess, parcels of property have this exemption. This exemption freezes the residential tax liability at the value of the year. It was applied for and granted. The resident's tax liability will never go up, but decrease of the property value is decreased. In 2017, 2018, the total value for all 65, and this is from the tax office, this is none, this is their numbers. And the total tax, the total value of all 65-year-old exemptions is $25,971,990. So, just under $26 million is the value. It represents a 15% reduction in the total taxable value for the city of Ballinger. Our total taxable value's about $182 million. But this has taken off those tax rolls and so, we're actually at $156 million. And so, I think it's a great thing for our senior citizens. I think it's a great thing for our 65-year-old residents. It is certainly an attractive tool for people. But I think council should have been advised, or you can be advised, of the values that they have. Just to be clear, I'm not advocating that we reduce that or take that away or whatever. But that does come at a cost. Utility franchise taxes, these are the taxes that we get from ADNIS. These are taxes that we get from AEP. Vive is another one. Republic, I think, is another one. These are people that use our rideaways. AT&amp;T used to provide us with some rideaway use. That's probably wanting to change the lobby very effectively in the legislature. And they reduced, they're basically exempt from paying any rideaway fees or franchise taxes. So, there's that. We also have license and permits, miss report fines, things of that nature. Our system of processes for the budget, Donida got a copy of the budget on August the 1st. You have an up-to-date draft of August the 21st. We will hold a two, this draft, this budget will include expenditures and the means of financing those, the expenditure revenues. Two public hearings will be conducted, one for the 5th, one's on the 12th. City council approves about ordinance, budget appropriations by September the 30th. We're scheduled to do that on September the 18th. Any revisions that alter the total appropriations must be approved by the council. Council may offer us additional appropriations during the year as well. So, you're not really totally locked into it, but there's some of those circumstances. City manager, department head, will monitor the budget, we'll take a look at it. One thing I did want to point out, direct aid from the state of Texas. There's a misnomer out there that the city of Ballinger gives a check every month from the Texas Legislature. We do not receive any financial assistance from the state of Texas whatsoever. The sales tax that we give on a monthly, quarterly, and annual basis is sales tax that is generated locally within the jurisdiction of the city of Ballinger and not from the state of Texas fund, general fund. Furthermore, we receive various loan guarantees from the state of Texas, specifically the water development board. And these loan guarantees are paid by the city via revenues of the enterprise fund. Unlike criminalities such as Ballinger ISD or Reynolds County, the city of Ballinger does not receive direct aid from the state of Texas. I want to be clear because there's some misnomers out there that the state gives us money and we get sales tax. We only get sales tax off of the businesses that are here. We only get property taxes off the property that's inside the city of Ballinger. And so, those are some things I wanted to clarify as, because I've been going around town. Finally, you have your debt service spreadsheet on here. I want to add that Donida gave me a heart attack when I first put this table together because she double-footed our, yeah, quit laughing. She double-footed our water treatment plant note twice. So, when I ran the numbers, we had additional $300,000 of debt that had not accounted for. That'll make your blood pressure go up. That's kind of funny, wasn't it? But you have, these are the debts that we've got for this, for the, for the upcoming fiscal year. The amount is the amount of debt service required in the budget, not the total balance. I can work on those numbers if y'all would like. And I'll try to find out when or how those debts retire to get them live. Of all the debts that you see here, $420,000 could be characterized as an unfunded mandate. That would be the reverse osmosis system of the water treatment plant. TCEQ required us to install the 12A facility and then the RNO system thereafter. Those requirements come at a cost, and that cost in this fiscal budget is $420,000. Water plant's scheduled to be paid off in 2023. The reverse osmosis plant, as good of a deal it is, it's at 0% interest rate. If you can beat that, we'll reply today. So, that's not paid off to 2033, though. 2030, yeah, 2030. But again, we receive no funding from the state for these obligations despite being ordered to, if you want to refer that debt. And so, there's your narrative. You've got, in the budget itself, a couple of things I wanted you to know about. Our health insurance costs have gone up 33%. Anybody's health insurance cost has gone down, please come see me. We, our costs went up. We just received notice last week that our contract with Miller View to a watch plant corporation went up for the fiscal year. It went approximately 10 cents per thousand. Total on that's going to be just under 200, or just over $240,000 a year. Roughly $20,000 and change every month. I was looking around, checking, it's a Miller View. And that rate becomes a fact of our vote first, so good news for us. That's about it on the budget. Again, take this home, look at it, digest it, see if you have any questions, concerns, or issues on the left-hand side of the table. We talked about the tax rate hearing on the 5th and the 12th. Number two, we put a boat dock in at Lake Ballinger. And it actually looks pretty good. It's right behind the boat ramp. And so, that thing was floated out, what, Thursday? You were, yeah, you were.
I would have to...
Yeah, I know, I know, I know. I think we did it Thursday. I know for sure it was up and ready to go over the weekend. And so, if you haven't seen it, it's really good. I'm trying to get a picture of it, I got a really bad one, so I'll put that in there. Park Hill over by Mabo, we have zipped it and we have bays and we're putting it down. We're letting people drive on it to harden it up. We'll put one more thin layer of bays and then we'll shoot it with rock and asphalt. I've received a lot of good compliments on that so far. People who walked in the park in the evenings have made comments that it's nicer to not worry about rolling or anything when you're going for a run or a walk. And so, I think that's going to be beneficial to everybody. This morning, we installed benches and later on, we will install trash cans along 8 Streets, 7th Street, and Hudgens. And so, we got those installed. I think they're, they look good. We've got some compliments. Initially, there was some backlash from some of the business owners, but I think that backlash subsided. Number six, well, we'll give number five real quick. We talked about this before, but I'll address it. We have, as y'all know, we're term limited on place one and place two. And so, we have the following, we're running in place one, which is Anita Martinez and Jason Gore. And then, in place two, we have Rudy Galvan, Amanda Cullen, and Rick Worch, who filed this one. And then, for the mayor's race, Mayor Mallory has resigned and Willie Covington has signed up for the mayor's race. Willie Covington. And so, we'll hold the election on November the 8th. I think early voting will start towards the end of October. Early voting should start, I want to say around the 24th of October.
Election's the 7th.
Yeah, 23rd. The 23rd?
About the 23rd.
Yeah. Do what?
The election day, November the 7th.
November the 8th.
It's on the Wednesday?
The 7th, okay. I am looking, yeah, yeah. Election day is November the 7th. Early voting starts October 23rd. So, that's, we'll be monitoring those things as well. Y'all just reported the local election for the alcohol, so that's going to be on there as well, as far as city can scream. The final thing I want to put, I want to do is mention a couple of things. It's in the budget, but I wanted to give kudos and advies to the Ballinger Fire Department. I think they have gone on over two dozen callouts in the last couple of weeks. I know Brent has gone out on numerous callouts and I'm pretty sure everybody else has. Those callouts, whether there's an actual fire or not, cost resources and cost money. It costs fuel, time for the firefighters and whatnot. And it costs equipment and it's hard on the trucks and all those other things. But none of those fires have been inside the city of Ballinger. They've all been out in Reynolds County. And we are a good steward with our neighbors in Reynolds County, but citizens of Ballinger aren't fitting that bill. They pay out about 10, about, is it $10,000 that y'all get from the county? It was $20,000 at one point?
Was.
Was.
Yeah, just probably, we got that, we got the new truck, ready to roll. It's going to be about $7,000. My thing's going to be at 99.9% use of the car. And yesterday's fire, we probably lost the, was it from Ford Green?
Nah, nah, we didn't lose a part.
Okay. We're going to salvage it, so.
The big truck, is that the forestry truck?
Yes, sir.
Just two y'all have that?
None, yeah. Oh, it's still sitting, but it's finished, but it's...
But about 7, about $7,000, that kind of pulled coming out of our apartments, were $20,000 worth of grants.
They should be in operation after this session, I appreciate it. This was the truck that they just deployed a couple of months ago.
Yeah, it's a DoD truck, Bob.
The Department of Defense gave us the truck.
What about the one from the forestry service?
That is, well, the forestry service, it's actually not a forestry service truck. It's a, the forestry service deals with DoD. DoD gets out the truck, then the forestry service takes it and gives it out to the department. And that's how we got it.
But you have it in your possession.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's in our possession, but it's a...
It's in our hands. At high school, getting, had to get paint job and...
Yeah, you have to, you have to have it painted and you have to, and they put a SKU on it. And then, we get reimbursed for the SKU.
And we are still on forestry list for another small truck.
Yeah, for another small truck, yeah. We still have one more, actually, two more grants, one for equipment and then one for a truck. And I'm probably going to put one in for a big truck, too.
This is like a tanker truck, that's the...
No, is it, it's a grass fire truck.
Harder, harder grass truck.
Yeah.
All right, any questions?
Back to the $400,000, $500,000 you're talking about?
Yes.
Is that something that, is that something that goes before council or is that something that goes about?
The way it would go on, have to appear on ballot. My understanding is, is that the voters of Reynolds County approved it in 1988 to, and it's not just Ballinger, it's Miles, it's winners, it's all of them. And those, that half penny is directed to Reynolds County. The, there would have to be a petition similar to the local election that was just done. It would be a county-wide petition. So, I think those numbers would be closer to 800... So, I think those numbers would be closer to 800 signatures, county-wide, and it had to go on the ballot in November of 18.
Brown has a footnote to the boat dock. It's very impressive, Steve, whoever that you did a good job. But looking at the financial, I see like $230,000 revenue from our RV park out there. Is that true?
Yes, sir.
But we're budgeting 1,000 for us for the park. So, is there a way we could fix that place up a little bit, probably?
The lake out there?
Yeah, the RV park, you know, where people come in, and you like, where it does have a real nice lake for our RV park in there.
Yes, sir.
You know, I could see your revenue really coming after we fix it up a bit, you know? So, there's kind of a, looks like it's been used and... Is that something we can add to the loop?
Maybe redo the electricity out there.
For the hump?
No, for the RV park. We redid all those.
That heavy park is the part.
The lake.
The lake.
Maybe the boat.
It's covered with water.
This is where I got it again.
It was.
Yeah. For my vision. Additional modifications, as in the... All right, that is. Here requests for people to get down to some city councils. Anybody have anything to get on the agenda, please?
Before we go into executive, I would like to say, hopefully, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Today is Councilman Garland Kelly's 21st birthday.
Happy birthday.
She's the man that passed that leg board.
So, happy birthday. And Bob McDaniel had a 50th birthday.
With no acknowledgement.
It wasn't actually, it wasn't actually only a birthday.
What day?
Only the other day.
About 10, 15 years after yours.
And then, Mayor Sam Mallory had a birthday two weeks ago, and I found out.
No ages revealed.
Yeah, no ages. Sam, Sam enjoys the 65 and older exemption.
Oh, really? He does the opposite way. That's weird.
That's okay. Donida has her name penciled in on one of those little bricks, leave them.
All right. We all good? All right. Ballenger City Council shall meet in executive session as authorized by Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Consultation with city attorney. Begin from the table and review the contract with the public for garbage collection service.